Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time I call into open session this meeting of the Arlington Independent School District Board of Trustees for March 20th, 2014, beginning at 7:02 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming up to join us this evening. We're certainly glad that you're here with us. We'll start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Raj in leading us to the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you'd take a moment, please, to silence your cellphones and electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And now if you would join me for a moment of silence. The first item on our agenda this evening is programs and presentations, and it is our honor, we're so glad to see this evening, that we have the Seguin High School 2014 Musical Class cast.
You must accept the chairmanship of the Lady's Auxiliary for the Classical Dance. Mustn't she, ladies?
Oh, yes. So is she.
Every step you make, Mrs. Shin, bespeaks the Lord. Will you? Will you? Say yes, Mrs. Shin.
You lady-mechne, Shin. Aw, well, that is dancing. Well...
So you accept?
Yes, indeed. And I would like to say-
Thank you. Now, about that young lady that plays the piano, Marion Prue, I believe. After all, she is a librarian.
Professor, her kind of woman does not belong on any committee. I shouldn't say this, but she advocates dirty books.
Dirty books?
Charles, sir. Rosalie!
Whoa, Dad!
And the worst part, of course, I shouldn't-
I'll tell. The man who dumped my strength, let me tell.
Stop! I'll tell. She made brazen overtures to a man who never had a friend in this town till she came here. Oh, miser Madison.
Miser Madison? Madison Gymnasium? Madison Picnic Park? Madison Hospital? That miser Madison?
Oh, yes. Oh, yes, that woman made brazen overtures. With the gilt-hinged guarantee. She had a golden glint in her eye and a silver voice with a counterfeit ring. Just melt her down and you'll reveal a lot to wet as cold as meal. Here, for the woman's party.
(singing)
Rosalie! Whoa, Dad!
Just a minute here. We need your architecture.
Yes, of course. I'll do what you want over at the hotel. Come with me.
Good night, ladies.
(singing)
Good night, ladies. Good night, ladies. We're going to leave you all. How well these days. (singing)
Hold on just a second there, students.
Hold on just a second. Thank you so much for coming this evening. As you can see, we have the Seguin High School Musical Cast, and they performed a little bit of Pick a Little Talk a Little and Good Night Ladies, and you will want to mark your calendar and not miss their show, May 29th, 30th, 31st, and June 2nd, in the Seguin High School Auditorium. This is a proud group, and the Seguin Fine Arts Department has a strong tradition of collaboration for musical performances. Previous shows have been nominated for multiple Betty Buckley Awards, including previous nominations for Best Musical. And individually, the Seguin Fine Arts Departments have strong traditions of high-level performances at UIL, Allstate, and other local and national competitions, so let's give them another hand, please. Thank you very much for joining us. School Student of the Month. In this month, we are recognizing a student from Seguin, Alexandria Hong. Is that right? Very good. Please, step forward. Mr. Nix, I know you're very proud to present the accomplishments of this student. We're always so glad to hear about them.
Absolutely. Vice President Sullins, Dr. Cavassos, members of the board, thank you so much for this opportunity to recognize our student. Alexandria Hong is a shining example of student achievement. She's ranked among the top of her peers, both academically and athletically. She's developed the discipline and determination to become successful. She's affiliated with organizations and extracurricular activities such as varsity and select volleyball. Health Occupation, Students of America, Student Council, Society of Volunteer Spirits, Academic Decathlon, Science and Math UIL, Philharmonic Orchestra, National Honor Society, Quiz League, and Project Heal have all contributed in nurturing Alex's skills in time management and effective organization and communication. Her leadership qualities have also been demonstrated by the many offices she has held at Seguin, such as the current student body president, president 2012-14, secretary 2011-12 of Hosa, junior class historian, varsity volleyball captain and captain of the science UIL team. As you can tell, she is just such a shining, shining star for Seguin, and we are very proud of her.
Very good. Could we meet her?
And so, at this time, yes.[489.81][489.81](laughter) So, at this time, it gives me great honor to present and to present to the board Alex Hong.
Ms. Hong, this is a tremendous honor to be chosen as the one student out of your entire high school to be the Student of the Month here, so we are very proud of you, and we're certainly glad that you're here this evening, and all your parents and your family must be very proud as we are. Do you have anything, would you like to introduce your family and maybe tell us a few words, like we always ask, what are your plans after AISD?
Yes, Sam. Well, to introduce Vice President Sullins, Dr. Cavassos, and members of the board, my name is Alexandria Hong, and I'm a senior at one Seguin High School. And today I have my mother with me, along with my grandmother, my aunt and uncle, and a few of my cousins. Oh, and my dad in the back. He's here. And I'd like to thank them so much for supporting me and pushing me to be the best that I can be. None of this could have happened without them. Being involved in so many different extracurricular activities, I had to communicate with them, tell them my schedule, and have them help me take me to places that I need to be and on time. After I leave Arlington ISD, I plan to attend Texas A&amp;M College Station and major in biomedical science, and then hopefully pursue a career in medicine. Yes.
That is fantastic.[588.54][588.54](applause) I certainly would like to congratulate you on all your accomplishments, and Dr. Cavassos and I'd like to come down and present, give you a small token.
Congratulations. These are trusty pens that normally trustees get at home, so we want to make sure you have one to match us, so thank you so much. Okay, we're very proud of you. Make sure we get pictures for this evening. There we go.[617.82][617.82](laughter) Right here. Please.
Thank you very much. Thank you. A lot of fun events this evening, so I'm so glad that we're here. Always love to see a packed house. And our next item on our agenda is to hear from a group very near and dear to us, the AISD Education Foundation. So, Dr. Cavassos, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, Vice President Sullins. At this time, we'd like to ask Kathy Jackson, the executive director of our education foundation, to come forward and share the progress that the foundation has made. The education foundation provides tremendous support to AISD students and staff, and so we value the work and the commitment of the directors, the leadership, and so tonight we're interested in hearing the progress of the foundation. Kathy?
Thank you very much. And Vice President Sullins, trustees, superintendent Cavassos, senior staff, folks in the audience, it's very humbling to follow the talented students that we've had forward here this evening, but I am very pleased and proud to give you some wonderful news and the activities the education's been working on the past 12 months. Before we go any farther, I would like to introduce those from the board of directors that were able to join us this evening. Our president, Laura Jones.[736.73][736.73](applause) One of our founding directors, Ann Morris, who's also the vice president of Grants and Awards.[747.88][747.88](applause) Our vice president of membership and board development, Linda Diaper.[753.82][753.82](applause) And a gentleman who has put in tireless hours working on a great activity we're going to host on, well, we're not hosting it, we're involved with it, and to benefit us and the district, and that's Chad Bates.[768.82][768.82](applause) There we go. Okay. We were founded in 1994, and so for those of you who weren't familiar, at that time it was, well, and still is, a volunteer-driven organization, and we gave our first grants in 1995. All of this is to try to fill a gap for what teachers and schools don't have, that's not provided in the budget. We don't replicate anything that's provided in the budget, but we do try to help them implement creative ideas. Our entire board for the past 20 years has been involved, of all volunteers, and we are very proud of the people who have come along to try to make this a bigger and growing We do share the vision of excellence with the school district to try to help that become a reality. So far, we have helped invest $1.2 million into classrooms of Arlington ISD. To help us along that way, it's not something we can do our own, because we do rely on the community. People who have corporations and individuals who have come forward have provided some general funds that we could supply to teachers, but also some restricted funds to try to help with programs they're interested in, a lot of science, of course, that's dedicated that way. In addition to those funds, we've had partners with some fundraisers. Six Flags is the newest one to come along, and that's going to be on April the 11th. When the school district completed its strategic plan, it was very comprehensive, it was very targeted, and we were really excited, because that gave us those goals to align ourselves with to make everything work and mesh together. Those goals are now part of our grant application, so if you want money from the education foundation, you need to make sure that you indeed are working in the direction the district's going. One of the grants, and I'm so sorry we didn't have a video of this, although it wouldn't compete with the live action, but one of the grants we funded this year was to the theater program at Seguin High School. They, the students put together something to help mentor younger students. One of the main ideas of their theater program was to talk to the students about bullying. They have taken it to every one of their feeder schools. So we've had all the elementary schools involved, the junior high schools have been participating. I'm thinking maybe that $1,000 that went to that school has impacted thousands of students and gave them some exposure to what's going on in the fine arts area. A second grant that finished up last year, actually, was called Smart Teaching at Dunn Elementary, and the students had, if you can see them holding them up, I know it's a tiny picture, but they're the student response systems. They were so engaged, on our final report, the teacher told us that 100% of those students were engaged in lessons and activities when using that system. So we're really excited about that, and of course it showed in their grades. At this point in time during this year, we have what's going on in the district. There's $55,000 worth of grant that were awarded for this school year, but in addition to that, we were able to get private support for specific grants and dropout prevention, iPods, General Motors. Right now, we have at least $93,000 working in the classrooms. That doesn't count the community gardens from years going on, they're still growing, so we're going to get a good, solid number for the number of students that are ongoing, with an ongoing impact. These are the community partners and collaborators we're working with right now. We don't ever stop looking, because we know there are people interested, with special interests, whether it's STEM education, fine arts, even professional development, it seems to be a strong point for many. So we're working with the departments and campuses to try to identify their particular needs and see what we can do to assist getting funds. One of those programs we're looking for right now is to help families engaged in Excellence in the Fee Program. We're looking for something to help with a music program, it's called a music professor, but it would be software that helps, it teaches, there are 11 different instruments on the software, to teach students when band director's times are limited, and it helps them practice, and it's online, so they can have access to it anytime. Okay, so coming up, I hope you all have been to a tailgate party. That's going to continue. It's a great way for us to generate fun and money for the grant program, but coming up, and we have a countdown of less than 30 days, is that right, is Six Flags. And I hope you all have our flyer, I left some out front there. It's a way for campuses to sell tickets. Each campus gets $5 for every ticket sold. Other proceeds will help the foundation with its grant program. So, like I said, Chad and everybody on our board of directors has been working very hard to make this a reality, and we hope to see you all there. Now, I was asked to try to cut it a little bit short, but I'm not going to skip the fact that we are starting our 20th anniversary celebration. We'll have events going on this year, a little bit of a kickoff happening with the Six Flags event, so we hope to surprise you with some great activities and programs for the students. It's been a great 20 years, we haven't been here that long, and great 20 years.[1141.15][1141.15](laughter) Are there any questions I can answer for you? Anybody have any questions?
I just want to say thank you very, very much, Kathy, and our wonderful board members that are in the audience. The gifts that you are able to bestow on our teachers, our schools, our children is vital, vital for them to dream, vital for them to achieve, which is our goal, and having things aligned with our strategic plan is absolutely perfect. Thank you for that, and I do hope that everybody here will come out to Six Flags on April 11th. It's going to be a fun time for everybody.
AISD night.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Jackson. I also appreciate the work of the foundation, as we all do, and I know it wasn't that long ago that you were in here announcing that you had raised your first million, and you were, and now I see your $200,000 into your second million, and that's really exciting, because AISD wouldn't be the same place. We talk about developing partnerships, we've had a partnership for a long time, and our students and our district and our city are the beneficiaries of your work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.[1217.83][1217.83](applause)
Vice President Sullins, before you go further, I want to just, there is a common theme in the first three presentations tonight, and that's all had to do with Seguin was mentioned in all three of them. There are some great things going on at Seguin High School, and Principal Nix is here. Thank you very much for everything you're doing over there.
Next, we'll consider administrative appointments. So do we have a motion to approve the administrative appointments as discussed in executive session?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Raj makes a motion, and Ms. Pena moves to, has the second. And any discussion? Motion passes. Mr. Hong and Mr. Pompa can't be with a seat this evening. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Sullins. At this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the principal of Ellis Elementary, Ms. Shakita Shakita attended Jarvis Christian College and received her Bachelor of Science in Elementary Education, attended TCU and attained her Master in Education in Educational Administration. Most recently, a principal at Crowley ISD, and has been an assistant principal in Crowley ISD, has served as an instructional specialist in Fort Worth ISD, a fifth-grade teacher in Fort Worth ISD, has served as a second and fifth-grade teacher in Arlington ISD at Duff Elementary, and a special education teacher, also in Fort Worth, and a special education teacher in Arlington as well. So Shakita, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you.
Is there anything you'd like to say, anyone you'd like to introduce?
First of all, thank you for such a wonderful introduction to Vice President Sullins, to the board members, and also Dr. Cavassos, thank you for this opportunity to be here today and for allowing me to serve the students of Arlington ISD. I'm excited to join ISD's commitment to help our students achieve today and excel tomorrow. I'd like to also recognize my Ellis family and thank them for being here, and I count it a privilege to serve alongside such a committed group of educators. I'm so very excited to join you as we commit to improving our students' overall learning experience, so I know it's going to be a wonderful journey. Go Eagles![1387.83][1387.83](laughter) I'm excited.[1390.58][1390.58](applause) I'd like to acknowledge some very special people who have helped to influence my career along this journey. First of all, Mr. Castillo, who was a principal at Fort Worth ISD, as I served as a fifth-grade teacher, and he was the first one to plant the seed or inspire me to pursue the field of education administration, so I thank him for that, for seeing something in me that I didn't necessarily see in myself at that time. To Ms. Idrah Bailey, to Ms. Terry Conley, and also Vivian Lincoln, who have all been instrumental administrators along the journey, who have also inspired me and actually served as mentors for me today. A special thank you also to Dr. Levett, and also Mr. Johnson, who serves as deputy superintendent in Crowley ISD, and also Dr. Powell, who is the superintendent in CISD for taking a chance on me and believing in me and inspiring me, and also served as one of my instructors at TCU. And lastly, I'd like to first of all thank my Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, for giving me this opportunity. And also, my husband of 22 years, thank you for your support, our beautiful children, Victoria Trailer, Nicholas Trailer, and also my pastor for being here today, it means a lot. Thank you. Also, special thank you to Mr. Hill, Dr. Harbrick, Dr. Wertz, and the entire CISD group that interviewed me and gave me this opportunity, so I'm delighted to be here, and again, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you.[1484.83][1484.83](applause)
Thank you so much, Mrs. Trailer. As is our custom, we ask that Ms. Trailer and her family follow Mr. Hill to the lobby for a receiving line. So, what's? Oh. Oh, sorry, sorry, Scott.[1504.15][1504.15](laughter) Sorry. It says Hill on my script here. So sorry, so sorry. You know, rookie errors, you know. We were formed a receiving line in the lobby to meet and welcome you. If you'd please let the board go first, so that we could, so we can take a brief break. We'll return at 7:45. Thank you.[1524.65][1524.65](music) 7:35.[1526.65][1526.65](music) The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, and there is an extensive amount of material that I need to read to, for the public hearing, so I will begin, and so bear with me, because it's going to take just a moment. So, for the public hearing this evening, "It's in accordance with Local Government Code, Section 180.007 concerning salary adjustments for contract employees necessary to reflect market value in accordance with TASB's Salary Market Analysis." We will now open the public hearing. Local Government Code, Section 180.007, states that political subdivisions may not pay an employee or former employee more than the amount owed under a contract with the employee unless the political subdivision holds at least one public hearing under this section. Notice that this public hearing has been given in accordance with Subchapter C, Chapter 551 of the Government Code. The governing body of the political subdivision and is, and in this case, the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees must make the following, must state the following at the public hearing. Number one, the reason the payment in excess of the contractual amount is being offered to the employee or former employee, including the public purpose that will be served by making the excess payment. And number two, the exact amount of the excess payment, the source of the payment, and the terms of the distribution of the payment that affect and maintain the public purpose to be served by making the excess payment. One of the goals in the Achieve Today, Excel Tomorrow Strategic Plan is that AISD will recruit and retain the most effective people by rewarding excellence and providing opportunities for continual growth. The activities identified to accomplish this goal included engaging a human resource consultant or consulting firm to review the district's current salary structure and to ensure compensation is properly aligned within the system to conduct an external market analysis of salaries to ensure that the district's salaries are competitive. TASB was selected to perform a salary market study and presented its final report to the board on January 29th, 2014. The TASB recommendations, including the individual salary adjustments, set the foundation for performance-based pay. The administration has reviewed the individual salary adjustments computed by TASB and identified the adjustments necessary for AISD salaries to reflect market. 423 of the employees identified have employment contracts. The board is considering mid-year salary adjustments for these contract employees. The public purpose of these adjustments is to be competitive in the market, recruit and retain the most effective people, and set the foundation for performance-based pay. The total of the adjustments for contract employees would be 363,617 of the total estimated 2013-2014 prorated adjustments of 922,967 for all employees identified for adjustments. The source of the adjustments would be available budgeted funds and funds approved through a budget amendment. The terms of distribution would be to prorate the adjustments effective March 1st, 2014, and the contract employees' remaining paychecks for the 2013-2014 school year. So, we have no, we have no comment cards that are marked for the public hearing, but I would like to check to see if there's anyone else that's here wishing to speak about this hearing. Raise your hand. Okay, does anyone, is anyone here wanting to speak on the public hearing? Could you please raise your hand? Could you please raise your hand? Okay, seeing none. The public hearing in accordance with Local Government Code, Section 10, 180.007, is now closed. Done. Very good.
Ms. Solins, could you repeat that?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Raj. Ms. Castillo, could you come? No. I said, thank you. Okay, thank you, guys. Now we'll move on to our open forum for agenda items. This is the routine part of the school board's agenda for regularly scheduled meetings. This segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to share their views with the trustees on items that are on the agenda tonight. It is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and the trustees will not reply to the speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. Personal matters are not appropriate subjects for open forum. I have, let me see, I have two cards from our audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You will have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on and the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. Would Ms. Leslie Langford please come forward?
You threw me off, so I'm going to have to readjust this. You are not president, Hogg. Members of the school board. You threw me off. Members of the school board and Dr. Cavassos, thank you so much. My name is Leslie Langford, and I'm vice president of UEA for elementary school teachers. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the elementary teachers who work for Arlington Independent School District. Every day in Arlington, teachers arrive at school ready to invest in their students. They come with high expectations and the willingness to give their physical, emotional, and mental best to assist students in achieving their goals. I was going to read to you this very long list that we have put together over the last several weeks of the many things that we have to do during the day, but I'm going to put it down for a second and just kind of talk. Our passion as teachers is to meet the needs of our students, and we do that every day by digging through curriculum documents and digging through curriculum and looking through our data because our passion is to make sure that our children learn and that they're successful and that they achieve. And that's why all of us became teachers, because we love kids and we love young adults and we want to make them into productive citizens, and that's why we go to school every day. But the last year, this past year and last year, the demands on our time have increased drastically, and we are spending a lot of time at school doing paperwork for ARDS and RTI meetings and PLCs, and the list kind of goes on and on and on. All of those things are good, but they're very demanding on our time. And so we're finding ourselves going to school earlier and staying later and coming on weekends, and we're just, we're overwhelmed. And one of the problems that I wanted to talk to you about tonight is our conference times. We're given 45 to 50 minutes every day that is supposed to be our time to take care of our phone calls to parents and preparing for lessons and things like that, but they are becoming increasingly taken up with RTI meetings and ARDS meetings and PLC meetings and team meetings and staff development, and that time is being taken away from us as teachers. And so we have to make up that time outside of school. And so what we would like for you to consider is to please find a way, if our demands and our time and our requirements are going to be increased, that you find a way to increase our planning time and our conference times and not let those times be taken away from us with meetings because we need those times to prepare as teachers, to be able to give our very best to our students. We are not saying we don't want to work hard. We know teaching is a hard job. We did not go into teaching because it was, we thought it was going to be easier, we thought we were going to make a lot of money. If we did, we found out we were wrong. But we love our jobs and we love our kids, and we want to have time every day to prepare and do our very best for our students. So we just respectfully ask for you to consider that and to find a way to make sure that we get that time every day so that we can be the very best that we can be. Thank you.
Next up is Ms. Kim Martinez.
Good evening, JB Solins, Vice President, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I am Kim Martinez. I'm a bilingual teacher at Webb Elementary, and I'm really nervous. Never done this before, but here we go. My topic today is about our substitutes, and we're asking that you increase the substitute pay because AISD is facing a severe shortage of substitute teachers. Attached to my speech, you will see the documentation from teams of the fill rates beginning first day of school until March 7. It's not all bad news, though. UEA has been working very closely with our new HR person, Scott Kale, and we are extremely optimistic about what he has to say about how he's going to fix this problem, and we're going to nip it in the bud for next year. We're good with that, but we're suffering now, and we're coming into our testing season where we all need subs badly. I mean, lower grades, we get sub days for our assessments, and we can't find subs. At my campus alone, just Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of this week, only speaking of kindergarten grade level, we were lacking five substitutes. That's impacting a lot of kids. What happens, and we're not talking about subs that we put in at the 11th hour, like, oh, my gosh, I'm sick, or my kid's sick, or I had an accident. These were subs that were put in the system well before spring break, and no one picked them up. Amazingly, someone picked up one of my jobs on Tuesday that I, when I had to do a staff development, and I was like, huh! So I have a name of a new bilingual substitute that I'm really excited to have. However, on a general day in elementary school, when a sub doesn't show up, what ends up happening is children get shuffled around, their classes get divided, it's pretty chaotic. It impacts those children, but it also impacts the children and the teachers who receive them. Those teachers are faced with not enough desks, not enough chairs for the kids, they have their pre-planned materials already out, they don't have those ready because now they, instead of having 20 kids, they have 25. So then you talk about their conference time and their web arts time when they go to specials. That becomes convoluted, kids don't go to where they normally go, so it is a lot of chaos and confusion for the students as well as the teachers. And never underestimate how a few extra bodies in your room can totally change the dynamic of your classroom. And the teachers work really hard to establish their routine, their instructional routine every day, and it does make a difference even if you have one extra kid sometimes. Also, because of these lack of subs, we are seeing teachers assistants being pulled sometimes to cover. Sometimes the star-focused teachers get pulled to cover, and that is putting Arlington ISD at risk of violating state laws as well as violating guidelines set forth by some of the grants. At least, that's what I understand. We're just asking for your help. We need help right now. We do want this to be a premier district, but we don't feel that with these kinds of fill rates on substitutes, it can happen. I was just handed a paper, Webb Elementary's fill rate from the beginning of year to now was 77%. That means 159 substitutes were lacking, 159 classes without teachers this school year. Overall, for the whole district until March 7, 5,491 classes were without a substitute teacher. If we do a conservative estimate of 22 students per classroom, that impacts 120,802 students instructional days. That's huge. We're asking you for help so that we can get through the rest of the year without facing this problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martinez. Next on our agenda is action items. Consider salary adjustments necessary to reflect market value in accordance with TASB's market analysis, and having seen this presentation several times over the last couple of meetings, I'd like to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve the administration's recommendations for the salary adjustments identified through the TASB salary market study to be effective March 1, 2014, and to authorize the budget amendment for these salary adjustments.
I second.
A motion by Mr. Baron and a second by Mr. Hibbs. Any discussion? All trustees present voting in affirmative, the motion passes. Okay. Next on the agenda, Mr. Baron?
Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, when will the employees be notified of the adjustments?
Do you want to address that, Cindy?
Good evening, Vice President Solins, board members, Dr. Cavassos. The HR department will begin notifying employees this next week. We'll notify them via written letter that will come in US mail. And all employees will be notified. There will be one letter that explains if you are getting an adjustment and another one that would say if you were not getting an adjustment, and in all of the letters, it lists the criteria used for the adjustments and gives website information where you can find information about the new salary structures and new ranges.
As well as contact information for questions?
Yes.
If they have questions or they'd like to discuss it, there's contact information will be on that letter as well.
Anybody getting a deduction?
No.
No.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. Next, we'll consider the items listed under your consent agenda. Are there any items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, Ms. Powell?
Thank you. Vice President Solins, board members, Dr. Cavassos, there are four bids on the agenda this evening, and in each case, the administration is recommending the lowest bids, meeting specifications, and the bids that represent the best value to the district. On our donations this evening, they scrolled earlier before the meeting, we have donations to present to you this evening totaling $137,869, which brings our year-to-date total to $900,128.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Move to approve? Ms. Pena moved to approve, and Mr. Hibbs, second. Is there any other discussion? Oh, sorry, Dr. Raj, second. Sorry about that. Any other discussion? The motion passes. All trustees present vote in the affirmative. We would like to take a moment, if we could, to call Dr. Evan Smith forward to introduce. We have here, I understand, the textbook committee.
Vice President Solins, members of the board of trustees, and Dr. Cavassos. Once again, I love coming to honor our folks here. Proclamation 2014 has been a process in textbooks. The state legislature approved and funded new adoptions for the 14, 15 school year for math K-8, science K-12, and technology applications K-12. Beginning last fall, these three curriculum areas assembled groups of teachers to evaluate the materials on the TEA-approved list. This included extensive rubrics that the teachers were asked to complete in their evaluations. The committees also attended presentations by the publishers, both here in Arlington and in some other surrounding districts. In January, parents were invited to review the materials through the library services annex. Julie Moore, coordinator, did an amazing job in working with all of the publishers to set up electronic access to the materials for these parents to review. These evaluation forms were provided back to the teacher committees for their recommendations. In February, each of the curriculum areas gathered to make their final recommendations for each grade level. These recommendations were presented to the Instructional Materials Allotment Committee on February 27 for consideration. Together, the curriculum areas and the instructional materials groups will work with the selected publishers to get the best pricing for the district. Recognition should also go to Joan Alvey, Secretary for Transformational Learning, for all the work that she did in the adoption process. But right now, I would like to ask the members of the committee and those that worked so hard and gave so much of their time in this process to please stand. And remain standing, remain standing, because I want to take just a point, if I might, a privilege, and ask them to introduce themselves because these people gave tirelessly of their time. And if I could start over here, we'll ask you to state your name for the group and your campus and your position.
I'm Molly Bennett. I'm from Butler Elementary, and I worked on the test.
I'm Meg Anderson. I teach first grade at Little, and I worked on the test.
Margie Williams, Martin High School, and I did the design.
Victor Avila, San Francisco High School, worked in pure science.
Yes.
I'm Claudia Scary, first grade, Swift Elementary, and I worked on the math materials for K through 2.
Monica Baroque from Alsley Junior High, and I worked on the seventh grade, eighth grade materials for math.
Keesha Waters, Rockmore Elementary, I worked on 3 through 5 math.
Melissa Valmering, and representing the 6th, 7th, and 8th science.
Randy Bastis at Arlington High School and worked on biology.
Adrina McDonald, Venture High School, environmental systems.
Susan Hall, Duff Elementary, first grade, and I worked on K through 2 science.
Molly Mitchell, Sam Houston High School, chemistry.
Adrian Trevino, Ashworth Elementary, 5th grade, science.
Hi, I'm Stan Mullin, Martin High School. I worked on the earth and space science and the astronomy adoption.
Jason Shank, Martin High School, integrated physics and chemistry.
Once again, I want to recognize the wonderful expertise that has gone into this process by these wonderful professionals. Thank you. Thank you very much.
And also, thank you for joining us this evening so we have an opportunity to meet you. Next, we'll move on to our discussion items, and first up is on-track graduation. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Solins, and this evening, we'd like Dr. Carter to give us an update on the important metric that's also part of our district scorecard, and that's the on-track to graduate. And this is a progress report. Before Dr. Carter begins, I'd like to compliment him and his department for the work that's been done on getting these reports completed and making sure that the data is integrated such that we can produce a report that gives us our on-track to graduation. So, Dr. Carter, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cavassos. Vice President Solins, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos, good evening. On on-track graduate report, progress report, something, this is our third one. You do actually, we just sort of hot off the press, also, you got the fourth one, which is much more preliminary because it does, it has just a little bit of a smattering of both the second curriculum assessment results and still some other lingering first curriculum assessments because not all the curriculum assessments have been completed. But you do have the third one, that's what this one is really particularly addressing. You recall from the scorecard, can't see the things too well up there, but we'll just say, under the student achievement, the very first target is dealing with the on-track to graduate of all students, and that is to go from 46 to 48%. Well, what we had, we have the target of 48%, and what that report indicates is at least now for the semi-annual progression indicator, we're at 49%. So we're ahead so far. But to caution, this is not like a linear process because content coverage is reflected in what is in the tests, and we, you know, sometimes... what is in the tests, and we, you know, sometimes things are more difficult later, some things are sometimes at the second six weeks versus the third six weeks. I mean, it's all those things. So, it's, but at any point in time, this is a good way of seeing, okay, how are our students doing up to that point? And are there interventions that are necessary to move on? So, that is good news, 49 percent. And for those that, I don't have it in the presentation here, but the board members have it, for the fourth six weeks, it's at 51 percent, so even higher right now. So, right now, it's, we're glad to see this, and we're awaiting the, a little bit more of the final, will probably be, we may wait until the fifth six weeks, just because of the way the timing is on the final curriculum assessments. But if it's too late for doing whatever needs to be done, we'll just go ahead and use the fourth six weeks, and then all of the curriculum assessments being completed. The criteria that applied in the entire area is K-12 course or subject grades, subject tests, the high school credits earned for grade promotion up to that point, and attendance. Now, you have this very complicated table, which gives all the different criteria for each of the grade levels and each of the subject grade areas, the test areas, all those things. These are the criteria. The students have to meet that criteria in order to get a hit as to yes. Now, for instance, when you see your chart of the actual numbers, that's the percent of students that meet these criteria for each one of those cells, okay? And of course, when it comes to the on-track, it's called for every area that there is a measure, they have to be, they have to meet the criteria across the board. Any area that they do not meet the criteria, that's regarded as not being on-track. So, that table is something, you have it in your hands. The main contributing factors, mostly as far as the, more of the dampening effect, you have the grade levels, you have kindergarten, grade one, grade three, grade 10, and grade 11. Now, right now, a lot of that information that is about grade 11 is mostly because it's just those who, that actually had the test, the exit level test again, and they're, they might be recurring 11th graders. Other for the course and subject grade areas, all of them. All of them have, in some areas, have contributed some, there's some areas, some needs that need to be addressed, and again, that's one of the purposes of this, of the report, is to identify those areas. Other contributing factors in terms of subject tests, grade three mathematics, grade five science, grade eight science, and grade 12 tax cumulative. That's more on the positive side, whereas some of the others are a little bit more of the, again, of the dampening effect. But the, we have a very good progress rate on the grade 12 tax cumulative for ELA and mathematics. Now, I think we have a principle here. Ms. Tucker? There you are. What we want to do is sort of give you a flavor about how this is used by the campuses. So, Ms. Tucker from Roark Elementary, if she can come in, she'll share with you basically how she uses this.
Vice President Solins, members of the board, Dr. Cavassos. Thank you for seeing me tonight. Really appreciate this. I truly believe that our district's emphasis on analyzing student data significantly affects the way in which teachers are making the instructional decisions on a daily basis that ultimately impacts student achievement. We have a process on my campus that I'm using with my teachers that allows us to take the reports that we receive from Dr. Carter, as well as reports that we get off of Polaris, and drill down actually to instruction. So, the numbers that we get on those pages become more than just numbers on a page. All schools work through looking at the data in a variety of ways, but we have a process that helps us do planning, and I'd like to take just a few minutes to walk you through what we're doing with our teachers by grade levels when we have what we call our DataWise meetings, our PLCs. On the screen, on this form, you see it's just a blank template, but we can impose any data that we receive on this particular form. We begin by looking at the section on the left, and we begin our discussions with just an overall percent correct on how the district did on a particular assessment tool, and then how our school is compared to that district average. And from then, immediately, we begin to identify the texts that would be considered strengths for the grade level, and texts where there were challenges for the grade level. So, we're looking at that big picture and how the grade level was functioning. And then we look at the middle of the form. As part of the process, we do take time for celebrations. I really believe that this is important for our teachers to be able to identify the things that we've done well, the texts that our students have been strong in, where we've accomplished, where the instruction has been effective. I think that kind of discussion where teachers are sharing the strategies that they've used with their students, and they're sharing this information, they're talking about the resources that they've used, really helps with the sustainability, so we can repeat those things. Those things are where our children have been effective, have been successful, the teaching has been effective. We want to be able to continue with that. From there, if we look at the middle of that form, we are very intentional about targeting specific texts that need to be re-taught. So, we're digging deep and looking in that, and in this phase, teachers share what we call the learner-centered problem, and they also look at problems of practice. It's an opportunity for teachers to be very reflective about how they've actually taught that particular tech or that particular skill, what actually happened, and how they can change that instruction so that we can reach mastery, so that we can make a difference for our students. The power of this process of using this format is really in the collaboration and in the conversations that teachers bring to the table. When teachers are being reflective and they can share, then everyone benefits from that discussion. From these discussions, we're able to identify specific students who are struggling, and then we can plan appropriate interventions for those students. Likewise, we're able to, also able to plan for those students who would benefit from extensions. Those students are doing great. They need to continue to learn and continue to build on their skills, so we're able to spiral that curriculum for them, once we've identified where they are, which students should be involved. Once these texts are targeted and selected, then we work on unpacking the texts, and we've had PD this year working with that. This is where we breaking that tech apart, and we're finding that many of the texts have multiple components that we have to be aware of, so that we are making sure that we are addressing each of the components and in all the different ways that they could be tested. From there, we can, if we have that information, then we can create a very effective campus-based assessment on those targeted texts. Teachers have an opportunity to discuss ways that they're providing the instruction, what needs to be emphasized, if it's vocabulary, if it's a process skill that needs to be taught, how they can scaffold that instruction, so that we have children reaching mastery, the kind of practice that needs to take place. And several weeks later, once that instruction is in place, several weeks later, then they will administer that campus-based assessment, and we can monitor progress. The discussions that the teachers have are, can be very lively, they can be challenging, but it's what the teachers are bringing to the table, so that everyone benefits from their expertise, is what makes the difference. The information that is gleaned from the process is documented and shared. By the end of our DataWise meeting, this blank template doesn't look like that any longer. It's filled with sticky notes, different colored pens, different teachers' handwritings, but we're getting all of that information that we can share out later. Our instructional facilitators on my campus and myself, we serve as the facilitators for this, these meetings, we provide the guidance, I ask the challenging questions, and it's the work of the teachers that's making the difference. Our goal, obviously, is focused instruction, so that we can impact student achievement. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tucker. Any questions? We have two other principles here, in case you have any questions about how the on-track report is used at the junior high and also at the high school levels, if there are any questions.
Yes, Ms. Pena?
Yes, Dr. Carter. Have you been getting any calls by people that I sent to you? Well, there's, there are people who have now, they've been asking me these questions about, are we doing all this? How are we tracking success for the students and so on? And they were asking if AIS could provide all these reports. I said, we already have them. And the reason being is that there are groups who are supporting our schools individually. I'll use Webb Elementary as one in particular. It's the Rotary Club, and they are able to get funding, they have scholarships, money set up for the Webb children when they graduate from high school and so on, but they wanted to track the success of the students at Webb, so that they could get more contributions, so that they could get scholarships for these children and provide things for them. And they wanted to know if there was a mechanism in which they could, that was in place or could one be put in place to help them with that. So, I refer them to you.
Oh, please do. The, it sounds like they're, they're looking for, overall, just aggregates and where there might be some needs, and then they probably have to work with the, usually with the schools themselves about identifying the students in particular.
Well, there, I told them we didn't want to get into the particular students.
Yeah.
I didn't want them, I said, I would not encourage you to even ask for that kind of information, just a total. You're looking for numbers.
Right.
You're looking to see if there's a tracking mechanism, but you don't need to know which student in particular.
Right. And these reports, I mean, they're, it's public domain, so anybody, anybody who requests them, we have, we have sent it to them.
Okay. That's, so I've been sending people to you, because this information may be helping.
It's going my spam mail.
This information may be helping the schools, but it's also going to help the organizations, the nonprofit organizations that want to help the students in other manners. So, this data is really important.
Yes.
To help them get those contributions they want to.
Yes.
Help the students.
Definitely.
So, I think this is great information all over. You know, you're doing the job for one reason, but it's going to benefit other areas of our community. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Dr. Raj?
I just want to say thank you very much for going through the card. And for me personally, it's, I know we're doing all this, and we talk data all the time, but it's remarkable to see what you've put together, what you've developed, which is the, the science of teaching, the science behind the art of teaching, and putting it to good use for the art of teaching. And that's remarkable, what you've put together and what you're carrying through at the campuses. Thanks.
Any other trustees with questions? Mr. Baron?
Thank you, Ms. Solins. Let me put my teacher hat on for a minute. Is this document part of the overload of our teachers during their conference period?
Yes, please.
When we have our DataWise.
Please, come on. Thank you. Now, the guys could have jumped in on this one, too, but. Okay.
When we have our DataWise meetings on our campus, I have planned, I've planned for these meetings in our budget. I get subs for our teachers. We spend a half day.
But there aren't any subs, we heard.
Excuse me?
We heard there weren't any subs.
We work really hard to make sure that we have subs. It is a challenge sometimes, but we have been fortunate.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen?
Thank you, sir. The template that you saw, that she produced to you, brilliant template, pertained a little bit more to the actual curriculum assessment than the on-track. And so, although that template is used as part of the on-track data, we use it a little bit different in, in high school. We do go through the same, again, we do go through the same, pretty much the same process as of analyzing the data, as the elementary school does. However, we break it into departments, germane to the curriculum assessment that they took, and we bring out the curriculum specialists to go through that with them. That way, if they have questions pertaining to their particular content area, they're there to walk them through that. For us, this on-track graduation is more, like Ms. Pena said, it's more of a global picture of what's going on. So, we have so much data that we're looking at all of the time, the micro data, if you will, the student attendance, the tardy rates, the teacher failure rates, things of that nature, student failure rates, things of that nature. This puts it all into perspective for us. And so, we know what our individual students are doing, and we're having those conversations, and we're planning for them, things of that nature. This gives us a bigger picture as to, are we, are we progressing with what we're doing? Are we seeing the benefit, the return on investment for how we're handling the micro, the micro thing? So, it's not so much a form that, that boggs the teachers down, but it gives us a lot of information as to even the core subjects and the test grades. Are we in alignment? You know, are we saying that our students understand 100 percent of the material, but the students are showing us that they understand 20 percent of the material? Are we truly assessing for the learning? Or is this something that we need to look at when we're having our PLC meetings? And once again, those four questions come in, in our PLCs, that, of course, high schools have, that you guys, that the board has, has given the, the high schools. But those four questions come into play is, you know, what is it that we want our students to learn? How do we know that they've learned that? What are we going to do if they haven't learned that? And how are we going to enrich those students that have already learned it? And it's that, those last two questions that really allow us, with this data, to really dig deep into that. So, it's a more holistic approach, not so much a burden on the teachers when, when we have our PLC meetings.
Good evening. I'd like to echo kind of what Mr. Nick said. For us, it's just a big-picture view. You know, the strategic plan talks about 100 percent of kids graduating on time, and, you know, you don't want to simplify it down to one number, but that one number does kind of help see where we're going. It's very helpful to see. Dr. Carter said that the next round of CAA results weren't in. I find myself waiting for those, because I saw some dramatic improvement in my social studies and science curriculum assessments. And I kind of want to, I kind of am waiting for this, because I want to see how, how my numbers progressed. So, it's just a holistic view. I like that term that Mr. Nick's used. It kind of keeps us in line, makes sure that our curriculum assessments are passing rates on core classes are in line, so.
Thank you. Dr. Carter, just one more thing on this.
Yes.
That form.
Oh.
Okay?
Want to go back to that?
Looking at attendance being greater than or equal to 90 percent. Isn't that low? Can't we jack that number up and say 95 percent and have that be the, the bell ringer for us?
The major reason for that is with that 10 percent rule about being in attendance, because when they, when they fall below the 90 percent, then they're subject to other areas and whatnot. The 90 percent also seems to be, you know, kind of like a critical point, you know, that you're a mathematician, that slope, that just sort of changes quickly near that 90, and I think it's mostly because the students know, and the, you know, a lot of the parents know, but certainly the staff knows that when a student is inching towards that, getting below 90, that there's caution and whatnot, and be careful. If we brought that up to 95 percent, for instance, I don't know that there's as much of a difference in there, especially in how it correlates. That's the other thing we did. We did a lot of correlational studies with all this stuff to see how things intertwine, and at what point does the attendance give us additional information beyond what is already in the only other stuff. You might recall that originally, we were thinking of having discipline being part of the, the whole thing, but what happened was the discipline area, or as a measure, just didn't contribute anything more than beyond what was already there for grades and, you know, attendance and the test scores and all that. So, it's narrowing it down, these are all kind of independently contributors to over, on-track. So, when it comes to the attendance, we'll, we'll always be looking at those things. And I can, I can say, this is just about being on-track to graduate. This is not on-track towards college readiness. Okay? So, you know, that might be another thing when it comes to attendance. All those criteria will go up or would go up if there was, okay, the criteria is about college readiness. And maybe attendance would be one of those things where that would be particularly important.
So if this number drops below 90%, does that say that school-wide, our attendance is below 90?
I'm glad you brought this up. This is different from ADA. Okay? This is strictly, ADA is just the, you know, the, the accumulation of all the attendance, you know, versus, you know, over enrollment for all the students. So that can go all the way to 99, even to 100 and all that. This is strictly how many students are above 90%, have met the 90% rule. So these are percent of students who meet that standard, not, not the ADA.
Dr. Carter, the standard also is because, don't you start losing credit if you don't meet the 90%?
Well, you're in, you're in danger of, yeah, I mean, you can, you can have some, you know, there's supposed to be the attendance committee and everything that, that they're supposed to be looking at this to determine whether or not to grant credit. But, you know, and that's usually a, a delayed process because what we do is, here are the grades. And then if they have such grades in high school, they, they pass these, of course, they get these many credits. And that goes into here about how many credits they have for projecting for promotion to the next. And attendance, though, might, there might be some delays about whether or not certain students are, have, have met certain things. So it's just like automatically, they're not on track because they're subject to possibly not gaining credit. It happens very seldom, but it, it does happen.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other trustees with questions or comments? Very good. Well, I would like to add how much I appreciate you bringing this to us this evening and that as we progress through the strategic plan, we find ourselves as a board and a team of eight, talking more and focusing more on student achievement. And I think that that's going to yield great results for our students. Also thankful for you Principal Tucker and Dahlia and Nick for coming this evening and, and giving, shining a light on how this happens, how this works on the campus is very helpful to us. We appreciate your time this evening. Thank you. Ready for the next agenda item? We'll move on to the next discussion item, which is the student survey process. Dr. Cavassos?
Thank you, Vice President Solins. And this evening, we'd like to visit with the board about our student survey process for this school year. As part of our strategic plan, an important part of that is to obtain student feedback. And as you recall, last year, we obtained feedback from exiting seniors. And that data was very valuable to us and, and to our planning process because it shared with us the, the impact that our education is having on exiting seniors. This year, as part of our strategic plan, we expand that process to gain more information from our students. So, Dr. Carter?
If we were partners in journalism, I would always be mad at him because he always scoops my story. And, but, under the strategic plan, achieve today and excel tomorrow, we have the goal, goal number three, which is AISD will foster a caring culture of respect, integrity, wellness, and citizenship throughout the district. And under that goal is Action Plan 8.1, which says, "Develop a customer service expectation." So we have activities number 10, 11, 14, 17, 8, and 20. I'm not going to list them all here, but basically, it's dealing with the student surveys. And it was felt that that was certainly one of the contributing factors, those being our primary clients, students, that for an organization to have that sort of whole environment of respect and, and whatnot, their input about that would be particularly important. So, the grades included, like Dr. Cavassos had mentioned, we have the exiting seniors again, and it's going to be the very same questionnaire that was given last year. But then we have added here grade 10 in high school, grade 8, and grade 6. And these are pared down. It's not the entire questionnaire like the exiting seniors have. So it's, it's, it's doable. The contracting company that is, been awarded to do the service is, again, Gibson Consulting. And so that makes it easier also in terms of having good alignment about the other grades with the, aligned with the exiting senior survey. Survey coverage itself, exiting seniors, you have preparing for the post-high school experience. You have quality of instruction, school culture, school facilities, school safety, and background information. And that, again, will be covered just like it was last year. When it comes to the grade 6, 8, and 10, there are really only two areas that are going to be covered, quality of instruction and school safety. And the, the main difference is going to be wording, you know, wording that is more appropriate to, to lower grades, but still very much correlated, aligned with, for instance, if we have the information from sixth graders and, and eighth and 10th, it's, is there any kind of discontinuity about the results? Are they the same? And if you're trying to improve, then two years later, when the sixth graders become eighth graders, has there been the improvement? Is there a different perception? The 10th graders, with the things we know about the exiting seniors, is their perception going to change when they become seniors and they're doing the exiting survey? All those kinds of things, it lends itself to really having a very good alignment to see whether or not what we're trying to do to improve situations have actually been successful. Survey dates, exiting seniors and grade 10, so the high school students, it's going to be April 7th through the 18th. With grades 6 and 8, it's going to be May, just the one week, May through 9th. The reporting of results, with the exiting seniors, because it is, you know, the same one, of course, it will be the snapshot results. But then there'll be comparison report comparing to last year. So it's, it's not a cohort. It's going to be whether or not the seniors of this year have the same feelings about the, all those factors that we had in there as the seniors did last year. In grade 6, 8, and 10, basically, you just have the one-time snapshot report, but are there differences from the senior survey? So those things will be pretty important for us to, to gauge. And that pretty much takes care about what the process is on the student survey. Any questions?
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Carter. Now, trustees with questions?
Just a quick question. How did you determine those grades, you know, 6, 8, and 10 versus 7, 9, and 11, or 6, 8, and 11, or?
It's, exiting was the big thing. Sixth grade is exiting elementary. Eighth grade for us is exiting junior high. 10th grade is just to be able to get a little bit more of, it's almost like to get some confirmatory or disconfirmatory results about the exiting. It's just going to be important to, to get some other perspective dealing with 10th grade. So that's why. Who we've done, ninth grade, ninth grade is such a nervous time, even though it's near the, at the end. It's probably not a good time to, to do a, a student survey, plus a lot of the other things that tend to go on. Okay, 10th graders have a little bit handle on, on things in high school, but the others, it just seemed clear that the exiting would be the major factor there for determining.
Yep. Thank you.
That's very good. Any other trustees with questions? Dr. Carter, thank you so much for your presentation this evening. Now we come to our open forum for non-agenda items. This second open forum segment of the meeting provides citizens with an opportunity to address the trustees on any subject except personnel. This is not intended to be a discussion or a debate, and trustees will not reply to speakers. Derogatory comments aimed at an individual will not be tolerated. I have three cards from our audience. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You'll have five minutes to speak. A lighted timer on the podium will assist you in pacing your presentation. A yellow light will illuminate when there is one minute left for you to complete your presentation. When the red light comes on, the buzzer sounds, please end your presentation. First up this evening, I have Mr. Jeffrey Harris.
Vice President Solins, members of the board, and Dr. Cavassos. I'm Jeffrey Harris. I am the UEA Vice President for Programs. And I want to address with you tonight just the student-teacher ratios on the high school level. Currently, our district has a 27 to 1 ratio of students to teachers, but unfortunately, that really does not reflect the reality of our classrooms today. And we have a lot of classes with students running at 35-plus, including some resource classes. Now, studies show that class size is a great determiner of student success. And we do a great job, I think, in our district of addressing the needs of our exceptional students. And also, most of the time, we do a great job addressing those needs for our special needs population. Where we fall short, really, I think, and what UEA believes, is the needs of our students in the middle. Lower class size allows for one-on-one personalized teaching and for students to flourish in an environment that promotes learning to its highest potential. There is a huge difference between teaching, distractions, and discipline in a classroom of 25 versus a classroom of 35. So UEA would like to urge the board to keep the student-teacher ratio as close to 25 to 1 as possible for the success of all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Next up is Mr. Wen Hickman.
$660 million in new debt and $800 million in identified projects. You guys are brave. But I found that courage is born of conviction. And watching this board and this staff and the way they've worked over the past few years develop the strategic plan, I'm convinced that conviction is born of heartfelt dedication. So I want to thank you for that hard work. I have to admit, I'm a frugal guy. When I saw those numbers, I had to take a deep breath. I had some sticker shock. But as I began to go through the numbers, something became very apparent, some things came clear to me, that Arlington has changed. We're no longer the fast-growing city that we once were. We're a mature city. And you don't have to look around the country very far to see what happens when a city fails to make adjustments for those changes. They have problems and the school system deteriorates. So as I began going through those numbers, I began to appreciate all the work that had been done on the strategic plan, to do it thoughtfully, thoroughly, and to make a comprehensive plan to address the real issues in our district. I appreciated the fact that you went into great detail to do a realistic assessment of our facilities, to determine what facilities we had and our ability to develop the programs that we need to keep our students engaged and to keep our system competitive. Because we're here to educate our kids, but there's a reality we have to deal with that not all of these, not all of these cities have dealt with. And that's where we fail to compete with our neighboring communities, our ability to deliver that educational product diminishes. So there is a real benefit to our community for keeping our school system thriving and strong. I particularly appreciate the creativity that has gone into this program, to developing new programs, particularly geared at vocational education. Having worked with the high school kids over the past few years, many years, it's very clear, a lot of them disengage because they don't plan to go to college and they don't see any reason for them to be there. They're just biding their time until they get old enough to get a real job. But if we can keep them engaged, they will learn. And as they begin to appreciate the value of what education can do, I think we'll actually have more of those vocational students decide they want to go on and do something different. But at any rate, we need to deliver an education that is meaningful to all of our kids. And I appreciate the fact that you're paying attention to parts of the city that may not get as much attention as they might otherwise. There may not be as vocal as some of the other parts of the city. They may not be as engaged and turn out as much, but we need to pay attention to all of our schools and develop that product for all of our kids. So I very much appreciate that. So I come down here just to tell you, you're doing a good job. We all know that people are 10 times more likely to criticize than they are to praise. And as this comes out, you're going to take some heat for this. Other people are going to have sticker shock. And I wanted you to know that we appreciate the work that you've done, the dedication that you've shown, and the vision that you've implemented through this plan, and that your community supports you. And I firmly believe that as people understand what's at stake and the benefit to every member of our community, that we will gain more support. So thank you very much. Thank you to the staff, and we'll be back here to support you.
Thank you, Mr. Hickman. Next up is Mr. Jose Luis Flores. I'm sorry, I realized that he has left this evening and will not be speaking this evening. So that brings us to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Vice President Solins. And this evening, I'd like to share some information about our school district. And not long after our last meeting, foster elementary students were in for a special treat. Each student received a bag with three books from KPMG. And that's the audit, tax, and advisory firm that has a partnership with nonprofit organization called First Book. And so these foster elementary students collectively received 5,000 books. And, and the grant, KPMG awarded a grant to the library to renovate the library. So every student received some books, and it was a wonderful event. Last February, or in late February, Swift Elementary students joined me in, at the AT&amp;T Stadium, as well as some board members, to take part in an announcement of an unprecedented partnership between the AISD Fuel Up to Play 60 and a Healthy Zone School Recognition Program. Through this collaboration, AISD schools will work to recognize Healthy Zone schools and designate ways for students to remain healthy and have healthy eating habits and stay active. This is a great partnership. The Arlington AISD is the only district that's implementing this type of partnership system-wide. And so the Dallas Cowboys and the City of Arlington and Gen Youth Foundation, Dairy Max, and, and the NFL brought this partnership together. It was an outstanding event. Perhaps the, the best part of this, this event was watching the kids enjoy themselves when we were making these announcements. Barnett Junior High School had the privilege of having members of UT Arlington Moving Mavs wheelchair basketball team play at their school and speak to their students about their disabilities and the game of wheelchair basketball recently. UTA hosted the 2014 National Intercollegiate Wheelchair Basketball Championship the first week in March. And the students there were very impressed and were really amazed with, with the activities that were going on there. And UTA, again, is a great partner with the school district. Many of our members of the AISD Board of Trustees and I participated in the Crouch Elementary Reading Rocks event. These students had the opportunity to have guest readers and help read, in some cases. I guess he was, he was trying to help me or make sure I got the, the right picture when I was pointing to a picture there. And we had a great event there that local business donated furniture and equipment for the library to renovate the entire library at Crouch Elementary, another outstanding partnership from our community, and we appreciate that. We announced an exciting partnership, March the 6th, between AISD, the Arlington Police Department, and UT Arlington, where we allow high school students to take advanced courses and dual-credit courses to get a leg up to become a police officer in Arlington. And we know that in Arlington, a police officer is required to have a bachelor's degree. And so this is a partnership with UTA to make sure that our students get dual-credit in criminal justice, get early admissions to UTA, have some internship opportunities, and are guaranteed an interview with the Arlington Police Department. So I thank the APD, the City of Arlington, and UT Arlington for, for this great partnership. Friday before spring break was a busy day in our district with several activities. First, Sherrod Elementary had a Careers on Wheels Day, where several organizations, this is talking about careers, there was nothing serious going on, it was just simply talking about careers, of students to explore and learn about the jobs that go along with them. Organizations that went to Sherrod included the Arlington Fire Department, the Arlington SWAT, Arlington EMS, Arlington Public Library, and the AISD chef and catering department, and the Parks and Recreation Department from the City of Arlington. Ausley Junior High students also started spring break with their annual picnic with parents. And this theme was "Once Upon a Time at Ausley." And many of our students dressed up, as you can see there, as their favorite fairy tale story characters. fairy tale story characters. And last, uh, Miller Elementary, uh, mi- members of the Arlington Police Department and Arlington Fire Department competed in a fun basketball game, uh, against the Miller students. And, uh, the students won, forty-six to forty-four. And finally, as was mentioned earlier by our A I S D Education Foundation, there's an A I S D Education Celebration Event, uh, and then a party from six to eleven, April eleventh at Six Flags. There are a limited number of tickets, and so I'd like to, uh, ask that, uh, we show that and, and support the A I S D Education Foundation to benefit the foundation, which of course benefits the students and the schools. That concludes my report.
Good. Thank you. Dr. Cavassos, and do we have, um, board members' reports? Mr. Barron?
Thank you, Ms. Solans. Uh, wow, you covered most of it. Uh, Play Sixty, uh, P T A Founder's Day at the P D C was good. Uh, all the board members have been meeting with various organizations to discuss the I got to read at Crouch, and I commend Principal Orsini out there, what a fabulous school that is, and the program is great. I think this was their tenth year, and Mr. Nick's was there, and some other principals were there. It was a very good day. Uh, I got to judge the Science Fair at Williams Elementary. Interesting science they do. And, uh, probably the high point was, uh, I got to go to the, uh, Daughters of the American Revolution Annual Texas Convention in, at the Dallas Hyatt Regency and accept a, uh, one thousand dollar check on behalf of the Arlington Junior League to be used in the Back to School Fair for next year. And we thanked the D A R for that. Spent, uh, several hours with the N double A C P talking about the bond. Had a good time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Any other trustees with reports? Dr. Rush?
I'll say ditto to what, uh, Mr. Barron and Dr. Cavassos said. We, we have been all over the place, and it, and it's been great. Uh, one thing that hadn't been mentioned that I wanted to bring up, I had the opportunity to attend the, um, Arlington Life Shelter's inaugural, uh, key, you are the key luncheon. And, uh, we, uh, we do a lot of things with the Life Shelter regarding, uh, tutoring and in helping the, the families and the students that are in those transitional, uh, situations. And I had the distinct pleasure, uh, to sit at the table of, uh, individuals from Webb Elementary. And they have a program that, uh, they actually put into place as part of their curriculum, which is directly in line with our strategic plan, to get their students engaged in, in the spirit of community service and, and giving. And, uh, they created a, a, what turned out to be a drive, uh, for school supplies and things that they ended up presenting to the Life Shelter. And they, they were recognized there, uh, for their, uh, their involvement. And they had, uh, such small expectations a- at the beginning, and they were absolutely, the staff, uh, were absolutely overwhelmed at, at the spirit of that community, of those children and their parents. And many of them are in situations where they can benefit from those school supplies. And yet here they were, uh, raising, uh, a vast amount of supplies for those, uh, those families and those children, uh, in, for the Life Shelter. And at some point, it would probably be a, a great thing to be able to bring, uh, Ms. Davis, the third grade teacher, uh, that, uh, started that program, uh, to our board just to give a quick presentation, because, uh, to my knowledge, she's the first one that has actually incorporated everything about this into curriculum. And it, it was fabulous. And it was about, uh, you know, doing, doing good community things for the community as far as service. It was about saving, saving money and earning money, and the kids designed everything, came up with the theme, and, uh, it was a, a overwhelming success. So i- it was great, uh, to, to be there with them, and they were so proud to be there and proud for their kids and their school. So I just wanted to make that note, it was, it was really neat.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Any others with reports? No? That's it? Okay, then, uh, Mr. Secretary, do we have any items to consider this evening?
No, ma'am.
Well, I would like to wish President Hogg safe travel and a speedy recovery back to the district, and we missed you this evening. It is eight forty-eight P M., and this meeting is adjourned.